All right, so now we go number eight, nuisance ordinance update.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is in regards to the update of the city's nuisance ordinance. And so, with us here, just in the background, I want to make sure to let you know that the city attorney Shannon Chaffin, Chaffin Roy Santos, and then also our code enforcement officers, Eric Ball and Lincoln Eden, are online in case we get into the specifics that are available to help answer those questions. So, tonight, what we have going is that we're asking council to conduct a public hearing and introduce an ordinance replacing UBS City Municipal Code Title IV, Chapter 8, Nuisance Abatement Code, and waive the first reading. With the purpose to update the city's nuisance ordinance to help streamline processes, address current needs, and provide staff adequate administrative tools to remedy nuisances. And so, before you is a couple, a before and after shot of a blighted home that unfortunately we deal with regularly, just kind of an example. So I have a couple pictures spread out here. Obviously, they're not all this bad, but here's some of the extreme cases. So, a little background, council desires to enhance and promote property maintenance throughout the city. It promotes livability, enhances community appearance, and it raises the social and economic conditions for the community. Complete replace, so what we're proposing tonight is a complete replacement of the existing ordinance. Instead of going through and updating specific items, it's really at a time where, in order to match state laws, meet noticing requirements, address problematic nuisances, and meet current definitions and goals, and meet state requirements, that was really, in the format, it was warranted for a complete rehaul. Most of the, many of the items are the same items, but fine tuned. Garbage in the front yard is garbage in the front yard, but with this, it's a new form, a new layout to streamline that for, for staff and for the community reading it. So, a little more background, here's a few common cases that we see around the city. We have blighted property in the front yard, blighted property in the backyard with pools not being maintained, we have a marijuana grow up in the right-hand corner, and then we have overgrown vegetation in the public right-of-way causing conflicts. Some common nuisances from, from our YC 301 reporting system, from August 1st to August 1st, 2020, you can see the cases in the table, it's a little hard to read, but abandoned house building, 12 cases, fence issues, 26, graffiti, 60, home business issues, 30 cases, intersection, line of sight, tree shubs blocking visibility, marijuana cultivation, property maintenance is a big one there, you see 326 cases, shopping carts at 126, we'll talk with our next item, signs, substandard buildings, trees, overgrown dead, tree shrubs encroaching on sidewalk roadways, vehicles on private property, weeds. And this, those YC 301 cases don't include other cases that we typically deal with, such as vendor permit compliance, the mobile sidewalk, open air, non-compliant accessory dwellings, unpermitted building issues for the various carports that pop up around town, truck parking, RV parking, vacant property, and weed abatement. What the proposed ordinance does, city staff coordinate to put together an updated nuisance abatement code that addresses longstanding delinquencies and provides clear processes and options to aid the abatement process. It complies with current legal requirements, it provides streamlined clarified processes, it provides for a wide range of enforcement mechanisms, it updates, adds nuisance definitions, and it provides flexibility to staff to initiate code enforcement proactively and reactively as needed, based on the severity of the violations. So, tonight, it's a starting point with the ordinance, in a two-step process that where we introduce the ordinance as is a, as a process through an ordinance amendment, that lets the, let the public aware, but it also is an option to make modifications. And so, right now, we have a proposed ordinance, and there's definitely opportunity tonight and going forward, that if there needs to be a change, or if council desires to have a change for thresholds or a different goal for that, this is the meeting to do that. And we could either handle it at the meeting, or direct staff to come back with a revised code. So here's, there's a lot of wordy, a lot of words on these slides, but here's the highlights of what we've, what we've done, is substantial modifications and changes. We clarified the violations, so we went through, we made sure there's no ambiguous wording such as the public right-of-way conflicts. We've, we've identified the fees for the infractions, for the misdemeanors, for what is reimbursable costs. We've really spelled out the noticing process, and then also the appeal process for the public for each step in the code enforcement process, depending on how far it goes. We reviewed and confirmed the definitions to clearly define nuisance types, and that they meet current goals. Added requirements for property owners to trim trees, shrubs around streetlights and/or street lights, street signs and/or streetlights, that's been kind of a longstanding issue that hasn't been in the code regarding private property trees and conflicts with public facilities. Clarified conflicts with prop, with public property, removal of garbage, sporting equipment, landscaping material, and other personal property from the public right-of-way. Tractor-trailer parking, clearly defined, and then also, a big part of the section is vacant property definitions and requirement for property plans. And so that is, those are the big items that are new to this code versus previous code.
Through the mayor?
Sir.
Hey Ben, like, um, the property owners trimming the trees around street signs and stuff like that, in the past, we had city employees going out in a truck and trimming if the signs are blocked by a tree, then we've done it. So, according to this ordinance here, it's going to be up to them to do it, instead of us?
That's the possibility. And so, right now, you're absolutely right, if, if it's blocking a public sign, or a stop sign, one of, the street division goes out and cleans it, the, the frustration on city staff side is we're in that private tree continually, every year, every six months, it grows back, and so we're having to run out there and continually cut it, and it gets a little dicey, cutting private property in order for the public. And so with this code, it does put that responsibility onto the property owner for a private tree.
Okay, thank you.
For both signs and for streetlights.
So the streetlight that's 20 feet in the air, or their tree covers it, they got to trim it?
Yes. But with that, I'm sure the city, as always, endeavors to work with them to, to work together to get it resolved. You know, the, my next slide is, it's, the goal is voluntary compliance, and, you know, it's, it's one thing to trim a branch every once in a while versus trimming it every six months, and not having the authority to trim it if they don't want us to trim the tree. And so this gives us, it puts the responsibility onto the property owner where it starts the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
I went too far. Okay, so, and please, there's a law in this presentation, so feel free to answer questions, I'm happy to answer questions as we go through it. So the goal is voluntary compliance, that's the city's goal, that's always our operating procedures, is that we really want to work through education and verification, and work with the residents to let them know about the issue, and then hopefully work towards voluntary compliance. The proposed ordinance provides flexibility for staff to initiate code enforcement proactively with tools in place. The ba, so with this, it's not just reactively, but if, say, if there is a priority for mobile vendors, or for fruit salesmen on Saturday, there's nothing in this code that prohibits us from doing that, it's just based on resources, typically, we're in a reactive state on how we have things. But, but with this, it lines out different options for enforcement. It's not just, you're out of compliance, we give you a ticket, and then you walk through the dollar amounts. With code enforcement, it's complicated, it's usually tied to a lot of different issues with property ownership and responsibilities, and so with this code, it spells out the administrative citation option, special assessment, so if we have to go in and put a special assessment on the property in order to recover costs, or to recover those citations, allows for property liens, public notices on deeds, so if there's a pending action, we could put a notice on the deed, so the property sells, then the new owners are aware. If there's an authority to clean, and so if there's a health and safety or immediate action that the city needs to go in and resolve something, it has that authority to do that, then, then build a property, and then also, there's up to criminal prosecution in there for the mis, if it's determined a misdemeanor at that severity. And so definitely, when we get to those tougher cases, that require more stringent timelines and stronger penalties, staff historically and continues to anticipate that we work with the city council, a city attorney, to figure out next steps in how we balance, because we still need to meet the terms of our ordinance and state law, as far as noticing, appeal processes, and following all those different options. Okay, so before you is a typical case, this is, is this typically how, you know, somebody's garbage cans out, they're complaining, or they have some grass that's too tall in the front yard. Code enforcement receives a complaint via YC 301, we do an onsite inspection to verify the complaint, is it real, or is it just, you know, wrong address, or what? Once the complaint is verified, code enforcement may make discretionary initial contact. A lot of times, if it's a small thing, you know, they left their garbage can out, somebody left their basketball hoop out, it's, if we, if they see him out on the street, or we have a hanger, we hang it on the door, and it's more of an educational thing, let them know that, hey, technically you're in violation of this, but it's an informal education. We'll follow back up with verification that they did respond to that, if there wasn't a response to that, then that's when we'll go into a formal compliance, formal notice, where we'll send the notice with a date, with a reasonable timeline to correct, and then a establishing what the violation is, giving him the, per this ordinance, it gives the exact, the specific noticing requirements as far as the violation, the reasonable time to correct, and the future actions. So we'll follow back up with an inspection, if it's still not been repaired or been remedied, then we start getting into the administrative citation portion, which is an infraction, and they're based on $100 per violation for the first. We give them another notice, reasonable timeline, they don't do it, then it's, and it's, it's $100 per violation per day, or when we re-inspect. And so then it stair steps up to a maximum of $500 per violation per subsequent citation. So that's your typical. And most of the time, we get, for small items, voluntary compliance, but it's usually noticing and reminding people, kind of pointing out to them that, hey, it needs to be taken care of.
A question, Ben?
Through the mayor. Ben, having had several years of having to enforce the nuisance ordinance, I'm glad to see that finally we're doing an update to that, I know how difficult it is. So I have a couple quick questions based upon what you've just proposed here. First off, is this all complaint-driven, or is this with our code enforcement folks initiating stuff that they see out on their own?
So I would say with resources, that 95% of it's complaint-driven. If they're out there handling, you know, a garbage complaint, or weed complaint, or a trailer violation, and they're right next door, a lot of times, they'll handle that immediate area, or if, definitely if it's a health or safety, but many of the times, it's really with homelessness, with weed abatement, with COVID-19 education, and then just city priorities as far as how they flex with mobile vendors, usually their time is pretty committed with, with the one and a half staff members that we have right now.
One of the things that, you know, it's an intangible, which is the culture of trying to gain compliance versus, you know, voluntarily versus, you know, the heavy hand, because most of the time, if I'm getting correspondence from citizens, it's because something like weeds happened, and there's a, what they view as a citation is probably just the voluntary notice.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the fact that, you know, trying to knock on the door and establish some form of communication at the time of discovery is great. I think that consistency is a big issue, right? I mean, we could both agree on that, is someone makes a complaint about a, an awning, a metal awning, I'll use as a real prime example, and so, we're duty-bound to go deal with that complaint, but there might be 10 others in the neighborhood, but the only person that's getting it is the one that's complained upon. How do we plan on dealing with that? Because you're putting a lot more teeth into this ordinance, it looks like.
So those are definitely some real issues, and consistency is definitely the endeavor for me, because I get those complaints regularly, and so does our staff, where, hey, why are you picking on me about my, my trailer went right across the street, you didn't do anything for, for this person? And so, particularly to the awnings, the way I tend to handle this, and with through, through guidance from our city manager and our council, is that with this ordinance, it provides a mechanism to put a notice on the deed. And so when you put a notice on the deed, the, the way I anticipate this playing out is that, when the property owner goes to sell, or when they go to refinance, or when they go to get their insurance updated, there's going to be this notice on the deed to correct. And in order for them to get that to clear, their bank's going to tell them that, hey, we're not going to clear this until it's cleared with the city. And so that's going to put the burden onto private property owners to do that. It's not, it's not mandating this code, but that is an option. And so in order to be consistent, if the city decides we're going to go out after carports and unpermitted buildings, that, that's where consistency, if it, if they come in from complaints, or if they come in through building inspection, that we see them, that we're going to basically put this notice to correct, onto the deed, and then it's not a fine, but it really, and then we, and we tell people, if you're going to go do this without a permit, it's going to, it's going to cause you that burden, and I would hope that most people realize that, hey, sooner or later, I'm going to have to fix this, so I don't go forward with it. Obviously, there would be some outreach and talking to them, but it's really difficult, and the city's tried this before, to go chase all these carport guys, they pop them up overnight everywhere, and we get complaints from the neighbors about them, and I don't have the willpower or the resources to go out and find this guy thousands of dollars, because he doesn't meet his, his carport, when the guy across the street has it in place.
Well, that's, that's my concern, you know, having lived in that world for a bit, and now living on a different side, and you're hearing the same things I'm hearing, which is, you're picking on me, but you're not, you're not dealing, my neighbor gets away with it, why? I just want to make sure we have a good understanding of how the city's going to handle that, because the disparity is a problem. The last question I have, at least so far, is, you showed a picture of a swimming pool in a backyard, my understanding is, again, this is from weed abatement more than swimming pool stuff, is, the city can't act unless it can see it in clear view, is that still the case? So if, if a neighbor complains about their, their weeds in someone's backyard as an example, we cannot take action unless we can see it clearly from the street, is that still the case?
That is my understanding, and Roy is online, and also Eric, they could add to that, my understanding is we could ask permission, and then if they give us permission, or if the neighbor gives us permission, but please add to it.
Sure, if I could quickly address that one. The way the, the ordinance is drafted and the way the law reads is, if we can see the violation from a public space, whether a street or a sidewalk, alleyway, then we can cite for the violation, or if we can see it from an adjacent property, where we've, we've been granted permission to enter that property, then we could also cite based on that. We cannot force somebody to let us into their yard to inspect, we can ask permission, and we are required to ask permission before seeking a warrant to enter the property to inspect, but as long as we can see it from any sort of public space, or an adjacent private property where the property owner has granted us permission to access that property, we can use that information that we gather as a basis for code enforcement.
Okay.
May I add a little bit as well? That particular photograph came from a property that we were in the process of red tagging because of theft of electricity, et cetera, it was a myriad of issues at that particular property that gave us legal access to the backyard, and that's how we got that photograph.
Thanks, I just know that in the past, neighbors will complain, and say, hey, I can see it, but they're, they're up on the ladder, or they're up on the roof, and that just is where we get into a little bit of a dilemma, and that's all. I think if you put the expectation out there that we're going to be taking care of backyards, we better be careful.
Absolutely understood.
Typically, they would be required to be able to see it, not from standing on a ladder, but if, it's kind of what we call the open fields doctrine, so if I'm standing in somebody's backyard, and I can see it from, you know, where I'm standing in their backyard, then that information is easy, is fairly accessed, or the other thing is, if it's a two-story home, and I can look out the window of the two-story home, that also constitutes open fields, but it's really not reasonable, and courts would frown if we had code enforcement or, or other city staff going up on roofs and taking photos, or, you know, using drones or things like that. It's really, we're limited to the same search requirements as a police officer. So, the typical one being the open fields doctrine, where as long as we can go, and we have permission to enter an adjacent property, and we can see it from that adjacent property, then that information we gathered can be used against that property owner.
So how about, you're in the neighbor's yard, side yards, property side yards, the neighbor gives you permission, how about looking over the fence, is that considered legal, looking over a fence? The neighbor complains, you look over the fence, they got tons of trash, is that considered legal?
Typically, I, I would, I would say, you can argue that it is, but we would prefer not to do something like that, meaning, we would want it to be where I'm standing there, and when I look, and it say it's a four-foot fence, I could see over the four-foot fence and clearly see it, if it's a six-foot fence, a seven-foot fence, and I have to climb up and put a camera over the top of the fence to see it, or stand on a ladder, we wouldn't, the, the issues with the open fields doctrine may not apply, so we would, we would not recommend staff engaging in those kind of activities. However, if I could go into the house and up to the second floor and look out a bedroom window and clearly see that property from that bedroom window, then it would be subject to the open fields doctrine.
Thank you.
I have a question on, you know, in the age of all these wildfires, if you have a neighbor that will let the weeds go out of control, and we're all surrounded by wooden fences in our backyard, you can have a big disaster or something, is there some latitude there in the name of safety that we might be able to take?
Not, not really, the, the preferred option would be to ask for permission to enter, to inspect, and once the property owner has denied us permission to enter, then we would go to the court and seek an inspection warrant to determine whether there is a code violation, and that, at that point, we can assess the, the property, determine whether it requires immediate abatement, or whether a notice and a reasonable opportunity to cure the violation is warranted at that point.
All right, thank you.
Through the mayor, Ben, how many code enforcements do we have?
Code enforcement cases?
Um, staff.
Code enforcement staff, so currently, we have one and a half, we have a retired continuant, and so a 50%, and a, and one full-time, Eric Ball, with us.
How many open cases do we have at this moment?
Eric, can you help me on that one? I don't know if I have.
Uh, currently, I know I have a little over 100. Lincoln, how many do you have open right now? He thinks he's got probably 30 or so that are open yet.
How many of those cases have floated all the way through, where you, we don't have the deed part at this point, correct?
There's different options, Eric, it seems like we're continually working with these processes playing out for years, unfortunately, on some of the liens and the foreclosures and demolitions of the houses. Eric, please add to it, but it sounds like to me, every couple months, it seems like we resolve kind of one of these longstanding issues, or a fire comes up.
Yeah, varied processes, whether the property only, owner finally sells a property, and it gets mitigated and brought into compliance through a new owner, whether, yeah, vacant house that homeless people are staying in, and it burns, that brings in processes that we can then go in and abate and fix. But yes, there, regularly, we're working at all those long-term ones, it can be frustrating how long some of them take, but we're looking for compliance on all those issues.
Okay, thank you.
And so Eric, you might be able to add to it, but regularly, usually when the backyard is a complete mess, the front yard's usually a complete mess, and so a lot of times, there's a different code violation that could be issued on the front, so, say that rather bluntly, but is typically the case.
Usually, usually people with messy backyard have something wrong in the front yard too, so you get to address something, and at least have the conversation and say, hey, if, if the front yard's looking like this, what's your backyard look like, please fix it too.
Also to add to the, the typical scenario, is that anytime there's compliance within that process, the city will then cease, cease moving forward with future enforcement, and then work to resolve that matter where it's at, and then this new code specifies those appeal processes, or some of the discretion as to how you close that case. So, this is the next scenario, which is to highlight some of the options, some of the tools that are in this, in this ordinance regarding enforcement, and so this is a blighted property scenario with an unwilling owner occupant. And so the first process is real similar to what we just discussed, but it's the administrative citation route. So, you ask permission to inspect the property, if permission is denied, you seek an inspection warrant, conduct an inspection. You prepare a notice to abate property nuisances, which identifies the code violations observed upon the property during the inspection, and the time period to make the needed repairs. The notice will also identify the time and place to file an appeal and the potential administrative penalties for not removing, repairing the code violations. We file a notice of pending code enforcement action with the county recorder, which will appear on the property's title report. This is optional, but in those extreme cases that we're not having a willing occupant, this is an option for us. We inspect the property after the time period has expired, and issue administrative citations for each violation which remains unrepaired, unremoved. Each code violation is separate violation, and each day, it remains a new violation. So penalties per violation, infraction, $100 per day, $200 per day, $500 a day, they go up, with, if it's determined a misdemeanor, then it's $250 per day, $500 a day, or $1,000 per day, with a maximum, and then that continues. After a certain amount, administrative penalties is reached, which will depend on the value of the property, we would seek approval of the city council to assess the penalties, including any costs associated with an appeal, as a special tax to be included on the county property tax rule. Record the special assessment and lean against the property with the county recorder. If the administrative penalties remain unpaid after three years, we, we would then seek court approval for, of a foreclosure on the property to receive the assessed penalties from the lien sale of the property. And so, with that, you can see, there's a lot of steps, and a lot of notices, and a lot of time associated with that, and those are for the harder cases through the administrative process. So the receivership, so this is a scenario where you have a, a property that typically, there's an ownership that is incapable, incapable, or just totally unwilling to manage their affairs, potential bankruptcies, et cetera. And so on the receivership, you determine the value of the property via an appraisal. If sufficient equity exists in the property, we'd seek court appointment of a receivership to conduct the rehabilitation of the property. Once rehabilitated, the property is sold, and the city will receive payment from the sale proceeds for any costs associated with it. sale proceeds for any costs associated with a code enforcement action and initiating the receivership. Roy is available, I'm sure there's, and with these and determining what option, typically, it's a team effort with the attorney, with code enforcement, and with any other departments is what the most probable scenario to use for, for compliance. So, and then there's the immediate abatement. This is typically reserved for emergency health and safety. Eric gave me a quick example that they've used in their code training, code classes is if you, if you go by and you see a open pool that's in a, near a park where the kids are playing with no fence around it. With this, you know, it'd be immediate hazard to children, this would basically give you the authority to go in there and put a fence up, or somehow to correct the issue immediately. And so I'll walk through these here, but that's kind of a scenario that would be an emergency for a health and safety issue, or, or, you know, immediate fire. Request permission to enter the property and abate the nuisance unless the nuisance constitutes an immediate threat to public health and safety. You seek an inspection and abatement warrant for the property. Enter the property and abate, remove, repair the nuisances. Provide the property with notice of the nuisance and grounds for immediate abatement. Provide an opportunity to appeal the notice. Seek approval of the city council to assess the cost of abatement, including any costs incurred for the appeal, as a special tax may include upon the county property tax rules. Record the special assessment and lean against the property with the county recorder. Again, if the costs of abatement remain unpaid after three years, seek approval to foreclose on the property, recover the assessed cost from a lien sale on the property. So fiscal impact. Currently, we're budgeted 1.5 code enforcement officers. It's approximately $120,000 per year. Historically, there has not been a substantial offsetting revenue from citations. Looks like we receive less than $500 a year in revenue. Additionally, in the CIP budget, we've allocated approximately $50,000 a year, excluding this year, for abatement for city properties, which is also tied to homelessness and various miscellaneous issues around the city. With code enforcement, there's, I don't know if you're ever going to meet the need. I could put a full-time person just to deal with signs. They could go around and address window signs, the temporary signs people put up, you know, another full-time person for homelessness, health and safety. And so we, we try to manage with what we have and prioritize as we can. And so with that, the current priorities, not in specific order, but health and safety issues, homelessness, camping ordinance, blight issues, COVID-19 education right now, reactive responses to cases, complaints via YC311, and then any proactive responses to city priorities if there's a current need to address a certain concern. So with that, I recommend that you conduct a public hearing and then introduce an ordinance replacing Uba City Municipal Code Title 4, Chapter 8, Nuisance Abatement Code and waive the first reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If we don't have any, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing on the nuisance ordinance is, update is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. We have one comment. You may, just as soon as Tom is done, you can feel free to step on up and then we'll go to the Sutter Room and through the computer. Welcome, sir.
My name's Thomas Burns, 1885 Green Gate Street. So this issue, first of all, I keep both my house and business shipshape, okay? But I was out to do a little repair on a house just the other day that is being sold, and I actually sent a short video to Dave and Mark. Do you remember receiving that? Okay, so the place next door was a filthy mess, and I thought to myself, I feel sorry for this owner here that's going to try and sell that property. And usually, you know, over time, I would, I got a policy of live and let live, you know? I don't want to get into my neighbor's business. And I had a neighbor across the street from me for 20 years who I thought did a pretty poor job of maintaining his place, but I held my peace because of that. But as time goes on, I think society is degrading, and I can see the need for the code enforcement because of just the, the mess that some people are living in. And it's a blight. It's a blight on the city. Now, also, I thought about this, you know, maybe there should be some public input and a little workshop on something like this, because this is very, a lot of gray areas in here. And, you know, some people will use their code enforcement like, you know, like a tack dog on their neighbor, stuff like that. So I think public input should be considered from, from quite a different, quite a few people. And, you know, you got to consider this too. Now, right now, they have put a moratorium on evicting people. And so that kind of puts the property owner, if it's a rental, in a big mess. He would have, I mean, how can he do anything if he's got a tenant? That's, that's, you know, living in a pigpen, so. And on and on and on it goes. And also, the code enforcement officer, he needs to be one cool cucumber, not, not show up like a mafia. I mean, I dealt with him over the years for certain issues, or, you know, there might be a guy who's a, back in the day, you know, you might be in a bread truck or Frito-Lay or whatever and parked out front, some, your neighbor don't like it, on and on.
Is that the end or the warning? That's the end? All right. Thank you very much, Tom.
That's the end. Thank you.
Sir?
Judy, we don't have a 30-second buzzer like we used to on those anymore? Or Trish?
While she's doing that, Brian, I just want to comment that that, that's a very good microphone. That's working really, I can hear the voice really well. Thank you for that.
It starts changing color.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, you may have not caught him, but we have a three-minute limit on speaking, so have at it.
Let me know when.
It'll beep at you, but welcome.
My name's Benjamin Garcia, 33 years old, live here in Uba City, corner Clark and Aspen. Born and raised in Uba City. And so from my understanding, we're talking about city nuisance, you know, things that are eyesores and stuff like that. Allegedly, we're in a pandemic. We need to have a little grace for people. People aren't working right now, and, you know, we don't know what kind of situation they're in. And if we're going to be on this side of the fence where we're having people not work or shutting down businesses and requiring people to wear masks, or, you know, not allowing bowling alleys to open, then we need to have some grace for those people and allow them. We don't, we don't know what kind of situation they're in. And so I feel like, I mean, I don't, I don't really know how this whole thing's supposed to operate, maybe this was all planned or whatever, but, you know, in my opinion, we shouldn't even be talking about this right now. Because, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to shut someone down, we're going to, we're going to give them a citation, and then they're not going to pay, they're going to, it's going to get sent to this and that, we're going to go down the line, we're going to put a lien on their house, and then they're going to have to pay. And I mean, and in the meantime, I mean, what's their, what's their health like? I mean, suicide rates are going through the roof, addiction, things like this. I mean, we're putting people in a situation where they can't function. And, and it's all because of this pretend law that our governor has that, and we're all playing on, we're playing with this, with this thing. You know, we all know that these masks don't work, there's no science to back them up, and we're allowing people to do things even though it goes against his edict, and we're not arresting people. So let businesses open up, let the bowling alley open up, and then talk about whether or not they can clean up their yard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the building care to speak? All right. And I don't see anybody in the Sutter Room, have been on the computer.
None on the computer.
So if we don't have any more public comment, we'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to council.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Mr. Moody, thank you for all the work that you and your team has done. We started this process not a month ago, this process started way back beginning of the year, right after you became a director and we started talking about this. I want to reassure people, you hit a couple of key points, education. You know, this is not a mandate to go out and I'm going to knock on your door, Tom, and I'm going to, we're going to go through the administrative process. We took a look at the code, and our code enforcement officers doing the best job that they can. They're more reactive than proactive, and I'm going to share some, some stories that has happened in the past year to where we needed more, more teeth to this to resolve some issues because of public safety. Just want to be clear, we really don't want to find people. We really don't want people's property. We want voluntary compliance, we want education. A lot of times, people violate the ordinances of the city out of ignorance because they don't know. You know, I parked my trailer in my driveway, didn't realize that, you know, I couldn't leave it there or leave it in the street for more than so many hours without it having to be moved. You know, I mean, just, it's just, we don't know what the rules are. So we need to do, as you said earlier, educate, whether that be through materials mailed out, workshops, whatnot. The nexus of when we started having this discussion goes back to more of the abandoned properties, more of what's happened in the last 10 years in our city, to where when 2008 hit, we had a lot of foreclosures, and believe it or not, there's still properties in this city that were foreclosed 10 years ago that are still bank-owned, not occupied. And I received a phone call from one of our citizens last fall, when we had the windstorms, that one of the bank-owned properties out in Royal Ranchero area, a tree had fallen on it. Nobody had responded, and here's a tree laying on a house because it's a bank-owned property. The bank is in Southern California, nobody's here taking care of the property. And this is not the first problem with that property, because when I picked up the phone and called City Hall, before I gave the address, they went, yep, we know exactly where it's at. What's going on? There's a tree on the property. Okay. And we had to go out and take care of it because it's obviously a safety hazard. This is, when you look at the education piece, and I'm going to date myself, going back when we all grew up, there used to be the old commercial of the Native American Indian on the horse with a tear because of the litter. It's the same concept with our city. Have you taken a drive through our city lately and looked? And a lot of the properties that we have issues with are not because of ignorance or because of being down out of luck on the economy, it's because of just sheer defiance. We have a lot of out-of-town property owners that may or may not have property managers, and they're just allowing whatever to happen on the properties. So while we have typically been reactive, and we will continue to be reactive, and I agree with the vice mayor, we need to be consistent because I've received those phone calls as well. You know, somebody complained about my awning, or somebody complained about my RV, and I can look around and there's 10 more in the neighborhood, we need to be consistent. But it's more about the stuff that is just a general blighted property nuisance health hazard to our community, and we have to take pride in our community. These properties are bringing down the property value of the adjoining properties. These problems are not being addressed. So we need to make sure that this ordinance, which I know Mr. Moody and his team has put a lot of time in, to bring it into compliance, to give us the authority to help educate and kind of nudge things along a little bit, because we just want our city to look beautiful. We want our city to be safe. And that's really what these are about, because right now, you do have a lot of the gray areas going around. This defines a real clear path, and if we have a non-compliant property owner, now we've got the tools, according to the updated ordinance, to get compliance. But as one council member, I tell you, I really don't want to have to go there. I want to be able to go to Tom or Larry's, oh, you just, hey, did you realize that this was an issue? And nine times out of 10, the answer is going to be, no? Hey, do you mind cleaning it up, by the way? How can we help? Let's get you some resources, let's figure this out. It's about taking pride in ownership of our community. And so when I hear things about, you know, you know, turning, turning a blind eye, and I appreciate the video, we have to respect property rights and our constitutionality, but at the same time, we got to take ownership of our city, and we have to protect our residents. And, you know, we've had incidences that, I can drive up and down Cluse Avenue and see properties. We had a house out on Butte House Road that you were referring to, issues that caught fire not once, but twice in a matter of a few hours, and they, the owner just said, let it burn to the ground, and they let it burn to the ground so it could be gotten rid of. We've had houses on major thoroughfares that have gone through code violations and renovations that I know code enforcement worked with very patiently, and thank you too, gentlemen, because I know you guys have a tough job, so thank you to what you do. But, you know, they worked with the property owner, and after probably about, I don't know, my best guess is at least five or more years, they finally got Stucko and siding on the one house that everybody knew about on Stabler Lane. It's about, again, ownership, pride, cleaning up our community. And if we don't start with the, the tools necessary to get education and proper compliance, then we're never going to clean up our community. So I just want to say thank you. And there is one thing I want to go back to that you kind of hit on a little bit, and we've had the discussion on this, and it's in the materials. I think one of the issues, you don't have to go backwards, I can just bring it up. But the issue was about what we would consider abandoned property or vacant property. And under the current language in the new ordinance, the registration of that is basically left to some vagueness, whether it be set by the city manager or you as a department head, to what that would be. And I would hope that we would find some standardization, maybe 90 days, to where it's fine if you're trying to rent the property, but if you haven't rented it and it's still vacant after 90 days, go through a small registration process so the city is aware of it, because that helps law enforcement, that helps fire, that helps code enforcement to not only protect the property, but it, it helps overall with the awareness, because if it's vacant, you could get squatters, they could be stealing electricity, like I heard mentioned earlier at some point. You know, they know these things should not be happening. We want these properties rented, we want development in our community, but we've got to take pride in ownership. So I would recommend that to something standard, and I just throw out 90 days as an idea, but it's just an awareness so that it helps our men and women that keep us safe.
I could respond or answer any of the responses? I guess just to add is that, to add on to Councilmember Shaw's, is that absolutely the goal is voluntary compliance. It saves everybody a lot of paperwork, everybody a lot of headaches if there's education, and people take that step to clean and maintain their property. And so- And so, and then absolutely with this COVID-19, staff is, is aware and we're regularly working with, just today, I was talking with Eric regarding the demolition of a, an illegal add-on, and they can't get a contractor right now just because of that. And so that window of reasonable time, we're absolutely considering that with, with the goal to voluntary compliance. And as all of you are aware, Yuba City's still at that level where, we're still a small town. We still, you know, typically, the person, if I don't know the person, it's probably a friend of mine that knows the person. And so with that, with the goal for consistency and that, I'd be willing to straight-faced, be a friend of mine, that this is how we handle it, and this is the process that we need to go through. And so that is definitely the intent of our department as they go out and interact with the different individuals. As far as public notice, this is really one of the steps with us being a multi-step process for the, for the code, that it's, it's for the, for the public to interact right now and then going forward before it's adopted. But I want to hit on this, is we're not substantially changing, there's, there's rules in place, there's an ordinance in place that, that says you need to take the garbage and the weeds out of your front yard. And so there isn't a huge change besides some of these highlights. And regarding the, the vacant building, vacant building plan, which is a substantial change, how, how that reads for the rest of the council is for, for vacant properties, the city manager or his/her designee may issue an order to submit a vacant building plan to the property owner and require the payment of a fee as required under this section. And so it goes into this vacant building plan, the intent is, there is not a certain threshold in this ordinance, how it's written, pros and cons. So with that, it's, it, with, with having that flexibility that typically it'd be from reactive, we get a complaint about a property, or there's a really high visibility property that we want to know what's going on because it affects health and safety or pedestrian travel on an arterial. But the, the way we foresee this is how it's written, is that there'd be a vacant property, it becomes a nuisance abatement, we receive notice of it through YC 301 or through the public of that. We then go open a case on that, and then if there's not immediate remedy, then we work through this plan, where they need to submit a plan that details out what they're supposed to do. And with the first plan submitted, there's no cost. The, the plan lasts for, I believe, 90 days? 180 cal-
No, 180.
180 calendar days. If it continues to be vacant and they have to resubmit a plan, then they'll pay a fee, and then that fee's based on how often we have to go out there, how often we have to manage it. The concern, the, the pros with having that flexibility is that we don't have staff regularly checking every single property that comes up for rent. And then just how do we monitor the 90 days, and then how do we, you know, I don't want to get us into a position where the timeframe's so, so short that it's really ineffective where we're not catching them until we receive the complaint on it. So I, I would almost recommend if it's, if there is a desire to have a specific threshold, that maybe it's based on a nuisance isn't, nuisance is, is obtained on the site. We receive a nuisance case on the site and it's not resolved within a certain amount of period. Maybe if we get the, aware of the nuisance, and then it's not resolved within that reasonable period of time for the first one, we have some sort of threshold with that. But it definitely, that's at the discretion of the council.
Through the mayor, I, with 130 cases right now, Eric and Lincoln, so how, can you walk me through, let's say today is Tuesday, which it happens to be, so you receive a complaint tomorrow? How long then does that take to get to the particular complaint that you received from the YC 311? How long will it take you or Lincoln to get there? And, because you have 130 cases pending, and so can you walk me through that?
We are very responsive. We get to the, the cases that are being reported very quickly. Sometimes we're there within minutes after they're reported, usually within 24 hours. The longest it may take would be about a week. And just because of staff time and other issues that we have to, to get done.
How has the response been when you go and educate the community member, whoever that is, if they're a homeowner, a business, or what have you? What is their response when you're talking to them and educating them about the, the reason you're there?
Yeah, and thank you. It's, it's very mixed. We do, many people do say, oh, sorry, I, I knew you'd be coming by, I'll get that addressed. And they, they deal with it very quickly and, and do a very good job. Our citizens are good. But every now and then, we have somebody who just, for whatever reason, doesn't want to comply, doesn't want to work with, disagrees that the city ought to be involved in any of this. And those are the ones that take time for whatever their reasons are, whether they're incapable or just unwilling. It takes some time for some people to, to get around to it.
So then, for those that get taken care of, they're probably within a week if you're responsive quickly, I'm, I'm guessing on that. So then those that are challenging, how long's it, may that take? May it take a month? May it take a six months? Or how long, because that home could be vacant and homeless individuals can be in there, or there could be robberies? I don't, you know, I'm, I'm assuming at this point, but.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's part of what I, as a code enforcement officer, am, am looking forward to with this rewrite of our code.
Okay.
Because we have some cases that we have worked them for better than a year. And because we knew that we had some weaknesses in our current code, and being able to, to really go all in and have the teeth, we held off. And so the new code will give us that availability to reassess, recommunicate, and really let people know, hey, if you don't do it, we have this step that will occur. Most people respond in a pretty reasonable time, but we work with each of our, each of our citizens that, you know, what are the reasons for their issues?
That's great to hear. So do you, if, if you have 100 cases, how many of those are challenging out of 100 approximately?
Uh.
Based on your experience?
Most, most of the ones that I, I, are longstanding, that's most of what those cases are, the 100.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, so there's a lot of cleanup. You know, probably 20, 30, maybe up to 40 of the cases are ones that I expect to get compliance pretty soon. It, it's the other bulk that they start to stack a little bit because they are time-consuming. And again, new processes, we're hoping to be able to mitigate, mitigate some of that.
Great, that's great to hear. So thank you for helping me understand more of that and how you're helping our community in resolving this issue so it doesn't necessarily have to be a negative experience towards the end that it gets dealt with in the education process and the conversation when you're meeting with him and Lincoln as well. Thank you for that. I, I think mainly for, for the, this particular process, I'm interested in knowing what the public thinks in general, because this is the first reading, this is the introduction, it's quite a complex new ordinance. But I, I would be really interested in hoping for the community at large to have a greater input and sharing with us what their thoughts are on their views or experiences. If you have, for example, if you have been a person that has in the past been approached by one of our code officers, it would be really nice to hear from you, if you're watching right now, to help us understand your perspective, your view of how we're doing as a city. This particular ordinance is not signed, sealed, and delivered at this point, we're just reviewing it, we're having a conversation. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, I touch on two issues quickly that were raised in the public comment that I think might help enlighten some of the aspects of the, the ordinance and the new components of it. One, I, I want the public and council to know and be reassured that this ordinance does not authorize staff to simply immediately go out and start citing people. Under the law, we are required to give people reasonable time to correct any code violations. And the reasonableness of that time is going to be determined based on the severity of the code violation. So an example could be, you know, graffiti is not going to be as serious as the open pool with no fence. In a situation like that, we may go in right away and fence it off in order to protect the public health and safety. Whereas with the graffiti, we'd give them a notice and let them know, hey, we see this graffiti, can you please clean it up? And give them, you know, 15, 30 days and work with them on, on something like that. And then the other critical component of, of this is the voluntary compliance goal. So it's, it's designed to give as much flexibility to the, to staff in order so that they can gain voluntary compliance, because no one wants to, you know, issue administrative sites or have to go get warrants and do like all those things. Our, our ultimate goal is, in nine times out of 10, it's as simple as letting somebody know, like, hey, you know, this is a violation, can you please clean it up? Or what can we do to help you get this clean? Can we pair you with a community organization, nonprofit, or city staff to get, you know, get this remedied? Let us know where you are. So, you know, it, it does take into account people's circumstances and the situation that they're facing on top of, also whatever potential safety risks those violations may pose to the, to the public at large. And then the other component in, in drafting this is we, we definitely looked at it and tried to be as consistent with what the law requires and, and fair to the public, you know, in the administration. So we want to give staff tools to enforce the code, but we also want, you know, the citi, the citizens to have fair opportunity to do the, you know, seek voluntary compliance or, you know, seek help from the city. And so that's really kind of the background of, of the drafting of this with, you know, Eric's help and Ben and all kind of putting our heads together to give something to the council and the community that they could be really proud of and not feel is, you know, some oppressive force to beat them down, but that, rather to, you know, pick, pick the community up and give, give the staff the options to address these, you know, situations that are going, you know, for long periods of time without any, any abatement. So thank you for that time.
All right, good, we're clear. Obviously, we've already had public comment. And anybody else care to, any questions or comments? Nothing? All right, we need a motion.
Through the mayor. Yep. My only suggestion is, Councilmember Shaw did talk about a threshold. If that is recommended to be added, we would add to the motion to add that clause into it. And so we, it would, it would save us from coming back to City Council with, with the introduction of that, then coming back again to adopt. With that, I mean, understanding more of, after reading it and then your explanation a while ago, almost having that flexibility, I think, I think might be good because we need to see how this is going to work itself through with the, the vacant properties. And as you mentioned, pulling that in and notifying the property owner once you receive a complaint, so to speak, through YC 311 or a phone call. Right now, that would be your mechanism. And I, I think going through this first revision, because this is a, a living, breathing document that we can fine-tune as time goes, I would be comfortable with that myself, even though I brought those up. So if you're comfortable with it, Mr. Moody.
Absolutely.
And then, given that, then, Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce an ordinance replacing Yuba City Municipal Code Title IV, Chapter 8, Nuisant Abasement Code, and waive the first reading.
Second. All right, first and a second to approve that. Action item B. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed?